I'd like to call this meeting of the Lakota Board of Education to order. Jenny, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Casper, here. Mr. Level, here. Mrs. O'Connor, here. Mrs. Schaefer, here.
Will you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Jenny, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Level?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
For my comments, I'd just like to wish our fellow board member Kelly Casper a happy birthday day. So, and with that, I'll move to superintendent's comments.
Just really quick, want to congratulate our 1,224 graduates from this past week. And we had a great graduation Thursday for West and Friday for East and one today for Dustin Hoarder. It all went really well. So, very impressive, both cer- all three ceremonies.
Dustin was qualifying at the districts for track and so that's why he was unable to run in because of rain delays. So, that's why.
We had it synced up, but Mother Nature didn't cooperate. So, Mrs. Davis and Mr. Bryant put on a great graduation for Dustin this morning. So, it was very nice.
It's great.
Yep.
And I'm going to do a presentation on the five-year forecast, so I am not going to delay our guests anymore because these are the folks we really want to hear from, so.
And we're very excited to welcome our students from Yandott today for our student spotlight. So with that, we'll pass it off to Lauren.
Good evening. President Schaefer, members of the board, Mr. Miller and Mrs. Logan. Tonight, we are recognizing a very special educator and all of her kindergarteners who have learned firsthand that acting on a good idea is better than just having a good idea. Mrs. Libby Brown from Yandott Early Childhood School did what any great teacher does. She let her students dream up an idea and when she saw the passion that was born from it, she gave them the support they needed to make it a reality. And the result was truly a learning experience her students won't soon forget. At this time, I'd like to invite Mrs. Brown, who is tonight's staff spotlight, to the podium to share more about the making of something these students are calling Books Are Us. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Libby Brown. And I just want to start out by thanking you for this opportunity. It has been a privilege to be a small part of this project and just to be the students' teachers this year. So, I don't want to talk too much because I think the video shares a lot about the project and after the video, we'll sort of hear from some of the students. But as an educator, this project has taught me a lot. But one of the main things that it has taught me is never to underestimate my students. Especially these five and six-year-olds. Passing by our bookshelf in the hallway, you might, without knowing what it is, think that, "Well, that bookshelf is cute," or, "I don't know." You might not think a second thought about it. But their work is so much deeper than that and I think that's important. The amount of thought, revision, collaboration, and dedication that all of my students have put into this project is remarkable. And I feel really blessed just to have my openness to that. From start to finish, this project has been completely led by the students, which is exciting. These students had an idea and they persisted. I think we can all learn from them. They even considered creating a bridge over St. Eddie's Dink Road. So, that was the original plan. Being a employee parking lot, but thanks to our interview with Mr. Miller, he kind of talked them through sometimes big ideas, start small, so that you can build them back up as momentum. So, that is where Books Are Us was born. And I think the video will really share us.
We can make the bookstore and we can put it on $100, like, and we can put the money, like, in a bookstore.
In writing workshop, we make eight books. And I thought since we're making books in writing workshop, I thought, well, might as well make a bookstore because we're making, like, lots of books. So, I wanted, I figured that it would be a good idea to make a huge bookstore. So, I thought to tell Mrs. Brown she approved with it. So, that's it.
The tape on the bottom is how we fixed it because my mom already broke it down. There's a little slot in the front for where? It's for the bookstore, so the money goes in here. If you want to come and take, you can take the drop off and give a little change from the box.
Are we allowed to fire people?
Um, no, um, because, because these are all my best buddies.
I went to George classroom and he interviewed us about being a manager. So, we interviewed him. And everybody had their crushes.
This Hane came and talked about a printing printer for our bookstore. So, that helped us.
Books Are Us is officially op-
Open!
Yes.
Changes the world because you built something and it changes what, what, what the world looks like and it changes how much room's in the world.
A bookstore contains the world because, um, it can change the world because it spreads.
So awesome, cool, and everyone can read. Someone, if all customers can read from the bookstore.
That's it.
A bookstore can change the world because everybody's up in there in the bookstore, in the world.
A bookstore changes the world because it's very different.
Because it's an idea and ideas can change the world.
Oh, the bookstore changes the world because it, whenever we got it, it got bigger and bigger. The idea got bigger and bigger and bigger. And now everyone's coming to the bookstore.
My favorite part about the bookstore is that it's still coming back to earth.
My favorite part was the bookstore opening.
My favorite part of the bookstore is that part of the novels because we got to learn about books.
Yes, my, so my favorite part was when our bookstore was opening and it was really cool. I just wanted to yell and yell, but I couldn't because I didn't go.
And my name is Kocia and our bookstore is called Books Are Us. Bye!
Okay, so now, I was going to give an opportunity for the students to share maybe something they learned from our project or something they would like to tell you about this experience. And as well, if you guys have any questions for them, they are wonderful at answering questions. Do that as well.
Well, when the bookstore was, like, not open, we, like, didn't have the idea. The bookshelf was just there with, like, nothing. Just old books from a really long time ago. Mrs. Harmon gave us bookshelf. That's all.
We learned about the 3D printer by just...
Mrs. Hane.
The filament, we learned about the filament. The filament is what comes out.
I think they're still thinking.
I learned about managers. That they are kind and respectful.
Well, I can read a quick list. We brainstormed as a class, so I think this is kind of a holistic list of what we learned. But some ideas that they came up with today is, we learned, the idea you have spreads. You can get smarter by helping your friends and they can help you too. We learned how to count to more than 100 by counting the shining stars together by ones and tens. I learned, we learned that we can really make stuff by just thinking about it and making it happen. We learned about filament and 3D printing. We learned that firing people is actually not a good idea. We should just help them with their work. And we learned how to sort books with nonfiction and fiction. And do you guys have any questions?
I'm kind of curious, if I were to come to Books Are Us, what kind of books would I find there? What could I?
Do any of you guys know if they went, if you went to Books Are Us, what kind of books? Maybe we should let our books sort and talk about what types of books.
Insects, holidays, dinosaurs. Coloring book.
That's a big assortment. Lots of different books.
Ocean books. Board books.
We like those a lot.
Animal books. Fiction and nonfiction.
Good selection.
I really like how you collaborated together and worked as a team. That is really neat and it shows, you're even helping each other as you're doing this presentation. Can anybody tell us one of their favorite books to read?
Mo Williams. The vinyl book. Ethan Teggie books. Lauren Lamb books.
You said you sold out of your bookmarks the very first day. What were the bookmarks that you made that you sold out of?
My favorite books are our chapter books. We printed 3D printed bookmarks. Books Are Us. No. Free.
What do the shining stars represent? Is that currency or?
Shining stars were, if you get a shining star, you can get a book from Books Are Us. A shining star at Yandott is you be respectful and good for a teacher or responsible. Safe or problem solver.
I think a lot of credit goes to Mrs. Brown, even though she's talking about everybody else. But thanks for, for this, thanks for being here. And I know it was a long project. And I know I talked, this probably won't make sense to the kids, but it will one day that, we talked about graduation in 12 years when you're all graduating. This is one of the things that you'll remember that you did in school was Books Are Us.
Thank you. If you would be, does anyone else have any more questions? Justin, I can't wait to see that bridge next year over Sunday. So, if you would come up and join us, we would love to take your picture up here in front with... Come up here, please. I don't know who's next, but they're going to have a hard time topping that. Thank you! Jenny's five-year forecast. Oh, Jenny, sorry!
Yeah, I was going to say, we might need some fighting stars, Mrs. Brophy, to, for Mrs. Brophy to pass along.
Hi, guys! Poor Jenny has to follow the Books Are Us. So, Mrs. Logan, we now have the five-year forecast.
Well, we will continue the discussion about currency. Although Mr. Miller, you know, gave me a hard time for asking about currency. But their, their teacher just informed me, they know what currency is.
That's how they learn, yeah.
That's right. So, exactly. Okay, so it is five-year forecast time again. It does feel like we just talked about it, but it's that time again. So, I always like to review the purpose and I feel like this is a broken record that I like to review this every time we go over the five-year forecast. It is a state mandate that we do this every October and every May. We do use it with our planning. But the other thing I want to point out is this is a snapshot financial report. And one of the things that, that I want to point out as, as being very timely and snapshot is on the agenda, while we're approving the five-year forecast, is also the LSSA contract that's on here for the same exact night. So, when we look at this five-year forecast, I had to assume some things. And one of the assumptions is that that will be approved tonight. So, the assumptions do include that in the five-year forecast. But there are other things that, that we'll get into that we, we just don't know all the information at this time to develop the assumptions. But we have to make assumptions and then as the assumptions change, the numbers change. So, the last time we talked about the five-year forecast, it was in October. What has changed? And on a high level, the May versus October five-year forecast revenues, we're predicting that revenues will be up by $3.5 million, which is 2% more than we predicted in October for this fiscal year FY18. The majority of that difference is due to, if you recall, that we did go through some tax law changes on a federal level. And that precipitated and encouraged a lot of our community members to pay their real estate taxes on an annual basis so they could take advantage of that deduction on their taxes. So, we therefore saw an increase in our revenues on taxes that were for the February tax settlement that were up higher than what we anticipated, which we should see on the August settlement that they should be down. So, when you look at the five-year forecast, you're going to, you're going to notice that. Our expenditures are up, but when you look at the total budget of about $160 million, it's materially on target, 0.8% versus where we were and what we predicted we would be in October. The net result of this is favorable to our bottom line, $2.2 million more in our, our cash at the end of the year.
Jenny, can you talk for a moment about where you're seeing those expenditures increasing?
So, the expenditures that we're seeing on the FY18, the majority of those are dealing with our scholarships and open enrollment, which were more than we anticipated.
So, tuition going out of the district?
Tuition going out of the district accounts for more than half of that $1.3 million. The other expenses have to do with our, and Mr. Sarge can attest to this, our fuel is up more than, and I'm sure everybody's seeing that with their own vehicles. So, our fuel is more than we anticipated. And then also, if you haven't heard, we are going through a redistricting, reconfiguration for next year. When that happens, we want to make sure that all of the resources that everyone needs in all of the buildings is there at the beginning of school. So, we have spent a little bit more in supplies than we anticipated for that, so.
Do you see an adjustment that we need to make in policy in terms of our enrollment? In our district enrollment?
No. We, we took a look at our open enrollment. Because of where we are with the reconfiguration, we do not believe we need to increase that open enrollment number. We want to keep it flat because we assumed the students who were coming to us through open enrollment would be there next year. So, as we've tried to estimate what the enrollment will be in each one of those buildings for next year, those students were included in there, but we did not include any additional students. So, we believe keeping it flat for next year will be good and then to assess it at the end of the year and, and figure out where we should go.
So, costs may be higher than tuition.
They very well could be. But I will say this, I'm estimating, one of the ways that we can, you know, we do try to offset that open enrollment out, while the expenditure went more, went up more, our revenue went up more this year too because we set that flat rate, that flat number as the max. because we set that flat rate, that flat number as the maximum. But then if students move throughout the year, we allow them to stay. So when you look at our net on open enrollment, we're actually to the positive by, I think, $100,000. So, which is good, but the expenditures show up, which is hard.
And I think that's important so that families do understand that they can tell us if they're moving because I think some fear doing that. And so it's important that they know that if they do move, they can tell us. And it's important that they tell us so that the funding does follow and.
Honesty is honestly the best policy, it really is. So the other things that have changed since we talked about this in October, next year we're going to all-day kindergarten, we're redistricting, reconfiguring, specials every day in our elementary, one-to-one in junior high. We have a new transportation contract and we have new bargaining contracts. So there is a lot that has happened since October, since we talked about this. And all of those things have been reflected in the updated forecast. Moving forward beyond fiscal year 2019, we're involved in strategic planning right now, which will no doubt make changes. As well as next year, we know that we're going to focus on secondary education and planning for that. I will say that for those purposes, for the secondary schools' planning, there's an additional five staff members that has been built in to the forecast for FY '19 and an additional 10 in 2020. I'm not sure that's exactly the number we will need, but that's what's built into the forecast for planning purposes. Once we know the actual numbers, we'll adjust at that time. Our revenues, expenditures, and cash spending deficit, just like in October when we looked, there is not a spending deficit through this forecast period. I want to state that. Kudos to Mr. Passarch and his efforts through the negotiation of our transportation contract because that's $2.8 million savings in FY '19 beginning next year. So because of that reduction, and then I have that growing by 3% every year after that, but because we saw that reduction in that expense, which is a big deal for us, it did impact our forecast. But the same board meeting that we approved that contract with Peterman, we also talked about, should we now increase our services for transportation? We have not made any of those decisions, so I've not reflected any type of increase in services in this forecast. So if that decision is made to do that, the numbers will change. So this is just the snapshot. And as you can see, there is no red, there's no spending deficit, and there's no red with the cash balance. In summary, our finances are strong for the forecasted period. Transportation contract, I know we've started those discussions. If decisions are made to increase those services, it will impact this forecast as well as the secondary schools and what we do there. But the finances are strong, the finances are strong. So questions?
Nice job Jenny.
Well, I just get to present it.
To you and your team for Chris.
Yeah. It's a lot of hard work from a lot of people. We appreciate that.
That's great, okay, there we go. Traditionally speaking, like when you go back a slide to five-year forecast, like this time last year, did you have red in year five? Did we have red in year five?
Not in October.
But in last May?
Last May, I can't remember, I can't go back.
I'm just curious. That's just not something I've seen before.
I can't remember, I should remember.
That's good, yeah. That's rare in Ohio.
It's rare.
It's good to be different.
Yep. And one of the things that we've talked about is, you know, we do have the, we have the financial philosophy in our policy that speaks to what is the minimum days of cash that we believe we should have as a district, which is 60 days. We are now, who would ever dream we would now get to a point where we need to talk about, okay, where is that threshold? Where are those guardrails we should stay between? Like, don't go below this. But when it gets to this point, you might think about where do we want to invest some dollars? And so it's just a different type of conversation, but it's a nice conversation and it's nice that it's a different conversation and not, we're running out of money. What do we need to cut? It feels good.
Good problem to have.
It's better placed than it was five years ago.
Yes. The other thing too, I just want to mention is the financial prospectus was mailed out to everybody this past week too, I think it was this past week.
I got mine.
Yep.
And it's very similar to what we did last year, and last year was the first year. So if anyone has questions, we've already gotten a few questions sent to the website that we're going to be answering. And one of those was around the areas of our expenses. And there's one that specifically says board slash administrative support. I just want to state that that is for the total administration across the district. That's not just board expense.
Where's that?
That's, you know, all of your principals, your assistant principals, even their administrative help is included in that number district-wide. When you look statewide, our number is 8%. If you look statewide, that threshold should be somewhere around 10. So we're below that, which is also a good benchmark.
Would you touch, you did mention risk and uncertainties. I think it's important to also note those just that our community is aware.
Sure.
Sorry to be Debbie Downer, but we got to be realistic too.
So, the forecast risk, the very first one, and Linda's referring to the actual notes, which is, like, it's 19 pages long. So if you ever want to know what any number on the forecast, where that comes from, there's very detailed notes. So within this, we speak about our property values. And we go through an update every three years and a reappraisal every six. We just went through an update. So that's always a risk if things, if our real estate doesn't come in, the value doesn't come in as we predicted. But we like to stay conservative with that. Our TPP, tangible personal property reimbursement, we were, when I came into the district, getting $3.1 million from the state on that. We received a very minimal payment this year of $300,000. It totally goes away next year. So just to kind of put that into perspective, that is equal to 1.2 mils of an operating levy that now we have to fill that hole because the state has left a hole there. Our state budget is 29% of our overall revenues. And every two years, that changes. So that's always a risk.
And it continues to trend downward?
It continues to remain flat. Let's just say flat. Because we are now on a guarantee, which means we can't fall below the floor. There's an amount that we can't fall below. So it continues. And this forecast assumes that we will stay on the guarantee, which means we're going to see flat funding. There's also, I mentioned the tuition that goes out of our district. And that's always a risk. I know there was a call to actions on a legislative bill where they're trying to increase the scholarships and opportunities that would leave our district and go somewhere else. And then every three years, we do enter into, well, I don't want to say every three years, our negotiated agreements here have lasted our three years in their terms. So that's something we make predictions, assumptions on where wages and benefits are going to be as well.
See, when I came on, the board state revenue to us was almost 40%.
It keeps reducing. If you go back and look at the chart, and there's, I love graphs and charts, but if you look at the total amount that the state gives us in relationship to the total, the amount coming from the state keeps reducing in relationship to the local. Local share continues to increase while state share continues to decrease. And it used to be 60-40 when I came in, and that number just continues to reduce.
Any other questions or comments for Jenny?
Thank you for your work.
Shining star.
I give you shining star, Mrs. Brophy. What did you want tomorrow?
Discussion on currency.
I think it's worth saying too, you know, thank you to Jenny and your team for just giving the data, just being on top of it. And I know that you're up in Columbus a lot, advocating for the district, but also things change frequently in Columbus. So being able to understand what that impact will have and having honest and real conversations about it. But I think there's also an additional thanks, at least from Kelly and I, for the board members over the past five years, right? Six years that have had to make the hard decisions to get our district into the place it is now. And so it is refreshing for new board members to be able to come on and have conversations about how we move forward. And like you said, having different conversations about finances, but also understanding that we want to remain fiscally strong. I mean, that's our commitment to our community.
And the advocacy at the state level, that you do have that credibility at the state level. And I think that that has helped us significantly when those new budget conversations come up. When we did get in significant trouble or that budget did not look good for us, I think we were able to turn that around because of those relationships at the state level. So I think that that's critically important as well and appreciated, so.
You haven't found the money tree in Columbus yet?
I haven't.
Just keep looking forward.
Keep looking.
All right, this brings us to our first opportunity for public comment. If anyone would like to address the board on any topic that's on the agenda, they may do so at this time. Seeing no one, we'll move to board reports, policy committee.
We have the second reading, right?
College credit plus and then board comments, and I think that's it.
That's it? All right. Community engagement committee?
We haven't had any, we had a meeting to help plan next year. What we're looking at is community conversations and how that's going to be structured next year. So we didn't have that meeting last week.
Last Monday?
Last Monday, yeah.
So, and when we get that finalized from, we'll get something from Jeff's staff. Wouldn't we kind of flesh out a little more?
Give you guys an idea of where we're landing, yes. Yeah, just where we're landing. Other than that, we don't have had any, except we have graduation.
So one of the things we're looking at is potentially doing sort of some student internship around community conversations. So having some students get involved and being able to plan some community conversations where students get to actually plan them and work with Jeff and be involved in that process. That's kind of a different flavor. And yeah, they would be able to pick some topics and work with them and look at what that would look like. And so we're excited about kind of having a different flavor. And hopefully, we always say that some of the best conversations are when we have a variety of audiences in the same room. And so we think that will work well because with the students planning it, we think that that will get more students in the room and hopefully they'll advocate for getting others in the room as well. So that's kind of a different flavor and one area that we're looking at that would be different. So as part of that whole program. So just one, that would be one piece of it, but just something to, where would we have? So Butler Tech?
I have student success and achievement information for you from the last meeting, which was last Tuesday. And the senior graduation ceremony brought together all of the school districts for one ceremony this time. And that was last Monday. That's all I have for tonight.
And you will recognize on the front cover is Amitaj from Lakota West, who is up for a national position.
Finance committee?
We are still waiting to have some conversation. I think we're going to, you plan to meet as a committee and talk about what that will look like starting in school.
Legislative committee? Ma'am?
Just a couple of things that we're keeping track on, and really it's nothing that new. House Bill 5991, which Representative Duffy sponsored, co-sponsored by Representative Wang, that we've been involved with, that is, they're still trying to get that out and make changes, but it's getting momentum. So I think that's very soon to come to fruition. And I think something will happen. Senate Bill 216 is the public school deregulation bill. That's still getting some momentum as well, but I think that's going to be pushed off till the fall from what some of the indicators are. Let me just make sure there's nothing else. Peggy Laner, who is the Senate Chair, is sponsoring a bill for behavioral supports for students. And so I think that'll happen as well. Good things, mental health that we've been talking about needing, some of the changes. There's also a bill floating through for grants for school resource officers. So pretty timely. I think it's about $10 million. And so I think that'll, something will come of that as well.
The only thing I wanted to mention, which really, it's not really legislative, but there's discussion, and I know we went to an informational meeting surrounding the possibility of a countywide levy for safety and security. The reason why I'm mentioning it tonight is because the timeline on something like that, if it is to be put up for a vote in November, it's going to happen very, very quickly with needing every district to approve a resolution or something. So I think we have another meeting on Thursday, administration, to talk about it, to see where folks are and what it might look like. But I know we've got some board meetings coming up, but this will be.
Has to be quick.
It's going to have to be quick. Because everything would have to be filed in August with the Board of Elections to make a November ballot issue. So if you back that up with all of the districts and their legislative piece of it, it's just going to happen pretty quickly, so. And that levy could be used for, it's safety and security, but it also has the mental health piece with it. So if a school district like us, we have the ability to put our own levy on for safety and security. But the language for local districts doesn't speak directly to the mental health piece as it does for this county school financing district levy. So that's one of the pieces that makes it so attractive, so.
More to come.
We'll make sure we're still positioned well. We've been, we talk about it almost every day. So that Lakota's positioned well in all this, because we're the largest district.
Can we put it on for a report for the next meeting? Do you want to explain that we actually have to opt out of that rather than opt in?
Correct. So if the county ESC, which the county school financing district would in essence be the ESC, the Educational Service Center, if they pass, if they pass the resolutions and file to go on the ballot and to be a school financing district, because we are part of that ESC district, we would have to opt out. We'd automatically be opted in. So we'd have to opt out in order to get out.
If we didn't want it.
If we didn't want it.
Correct. Right.
In other news, if the state has, there'll be a vote on the next speaker of the house tomorrow. And odds are favoring Representative Smith at this point in time. Appears he has enough votes to do that. Also, like Jenny said, it's not quite legislation, but it's still something I brought up to you before, is the mental health conference that C3 and Lakota are presenting together. And I'll fire for all of you for that.
Great, thank you.
Questions, please let me know.
June 1st, 10:00 AM.
At Miami VOA. That's all we have.
Thank you. Diversity committee?
We talked about scheduling a meeting, but we'll wait till we hear from Mr. Partnell. What a date in June for the three of us to get together will be. I will say, and this kind of ties into what you just passed out, because it's at Miami VOA, but when, this fall, we're working on a community university, for our parents, so a parent university. And we're working in partnership with Miami VOA. So they have allowed us to use their space and they'll do some things in conjunction with us. But at a minimum, it'll be one Saturday and one weekday every month. But I think that's going to double through our conversations on topics like what Mrs. O'Connor just passed out, but other things as well. The first one we have on the docket will be called Lakota 101. And our curriculum department will be presenting that to our parents and community.
Do we have a date on that one yet?
September, but I don't know a hard date yet. And the sessions, the minimum of two sessions will be repeat. So for parents that can do it, if the Saturday works better for them, great. And if not, it'll be after work hours during the week. So it won't be too separate. It'll be the same session repeated.
All right. We have board recommendations. I have approval of the LSSA contract. Do I have a motion for approval?
Second.
Second?
I'll second.
Discussion?
I'd like to say that, as I said before about our teaching staff, I truly value our support staff and all that they bring to the table. This contract falls within our budgeted forecast and it slows to a, slows our upward trend on salaries, which is the biggest portion of our budget. And I appreciate that and I appreciate moving off of the steps and to a flat cost of living increase. I think that makes more sense for us overall. And I'm supportive of this contract. And I appreciate those that came to the table in the spirit that they came with.
I agree. It was done quickly. That was nice. That was nice. But yeah, it was nice to see all the cooperation. Hopefully this will help us as we move forward with retention, which was one of our big issues is retaining that.
In some areas, it was 40 to 50% retention.
That we've lost since 2011.
It's a significant number when you have good training and all that goes into that.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. I'm excited about this contract. You know, I was a little bit surprised. I mean, I guess working in the schools, I saw the turnover in that, in those categories. But to hear the 40 to 50% that we had, and then looking at comparable districts of where our pay was landing, this is the right step in the right direction to get us where we need to be to start retaining our support staff.
And I would echo what others have said. And I think, again, the value that our LSSA staff brings to the table every day to our students, I think is immeasurable. What they're doing in the classroom, standing alongside our teaching staff and is amazing work. And our schools could not operate without all of our LSSA members. And I think sometimes there are unsung heroes in what they're doing day in and day out with our students. So we certainly appreciate all that they're doing. And often, again, sometimes when you look at some of the pay scales here, it really is amazing work that's happening in our schools. So we appreciate all that they do every day for our students and are really supporting all these kids. So thank you for that work. So with that, we'll.
Mary, thank you to your and your team for all the work you put in. I know it's not done in isolation and it's nice to see all your supporters with you here tonight. So thank you.
So Jenny, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Lovell?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
So I have Treasurers' Recommendations A through C. Do I have a motion to approve Treasurers' Recommendations A through C?
Somewhere.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? We have approval of board meeting minutes, the financial forecast, or financial reports in the five-year forecast. So Jenny, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Lovell?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Thank you. We have Superintendent's Recommendations A through G. Do I have a motion to approve Superintendent's Recommendations?
I'll move.
Any discussion?
Just a quick comment if I can, just that the calendar for 1920 is also included. You have that, but as a point of reference.
And like the 1819 calendar, spring break is not around the Easter holiday, which it has been historically. And so that's a change, but it's consistent with the 1819 calendar, so for people who are used to that.
It's very early.
Yep, it's in March. Yeah. So, and once again, that has been up for public comment and that was done through parent input, SASS input, and looking at testing and all the other calendars. So there was a lot of, a lot of eyes on this calendar before it's been approved.
Thanks to Mr. Vogelman for going through all that.
Yes. All right. So we have personnel items, second read of board policies, the school calendar, high school athletic association membership approval, disposal of textbooks, field trips, and donations in A through G. So Jenny, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Lovell?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
This brings us to our second opportunity for public comment. If anyone would like to speak, they may approach the mic at this time. Seeing no one, we'll move to closing comments. I don't remember what side I started on last time. We'll start with, I started over there? Okay, we'll go.
Oh, it's my, oh. Well, it should be. It's my birthday. I should get to go first. No, I just want to reiterate how awesome graduation was. It's my first time. I have two graduates, so I saw it from the audience. It's my first time seeing it from the stage. And it's just amazing. Our kids are amazing. Some of the things that they've accomplished, you sit there and just in awe. I did cry at speeches from the students, but you know me, that's to be expected. But yeah, I was just super impressed with both graduations. Those 1,200 kids are amazing. I'm proud.
That's all?
Yeah, they were first-class ceremonies. I mean, I haven't been to a high school graduation for a long time.
Tensherum?
I think I, back in another school district I was in, I went to one of them. But it was a, it was, it was a really cool experience to be able to see both high schools. When you go to their graduations on both, like, separate days, you see the personality of the schools. And you just, like you said, the speeches, the principals speaking, the parents, the enthusiasm is contagious and it's just, it's an exciting opportunity. And it was interesting enough for me as well, for Lakota East, because it was the 20th anniversary for me being out. I was the first class that graduated from Lakota East. And then to be there and be on stage on the other side, it was a, it was a really cool experience. And I tried to get my picture with Susan.
I know, you never did that.
Yeah, it was going right there in front, but really cool. So thank you to everybody that put those on and the administration, tons of teachers there.
They work hard.
As well.
Yeah. That's amazing, the staff that comes out that doesn't have to is amazing to me. It's so impressive. They want to see their kids graduate.
Very cool.
That's payday.
Yeah.
It really is in so many respects. Just congratulations to all of our graduates across the district and those going on to the military, to enrollment or to education, whatever their future plans. I would wish them the best.
Yeah. Again, congratulations to the graduates and their families. And then also just want to echo with the LSSA, I can't do my job without all of you. And so I thank you. I had a grandmother, I come from a long line of support people. And so I appreciate what you do every day. And I do agree, they are the unsung heroes, but we respect you. We respect what you do. We thank you.
Well said. Just a couple of things on safety and security. I was going to do this at the beginning, but when we had little ears in here, I thought this would be a better time. I do want to touch on a couple of things. We are going to have a safety council meeting in June. We don't have a date yet, but we are going to do one in June. That's our plan. Interestingly enough, after the events from last week, BASSA came out with an email that in Columbus, they're going to have essentially a statewide safety conference. And it includes 20 groups across the state. BASSA, National Alliance on Mental Illness, a lot of the other statewide organizations, principals organizations, COVID-OASBO, also involved, the Ohio Department of Ed, Homeland Security. So all the major players are going to be there. It's going to be September 12th. They are asking for presenters now. There's a wide range of presenters. And the target audience is administrators, board members, educators, school counselors, support staff, mental health professionals. So more to come, but this just came out this morning. So I wanted to mention it to all of you as well. So please keep that on your radar. We still will be hosting the Coach Hall Foundation Safety Summit next year, but because of this, we're going to move it to the spring. So it'll be either in February or March. So we're hunting a little bit because we don't want to be, they don't want to be too close to this. I shouldn't say we, they don't want to be too close to the statewide summit. So I didn't want to mention that. I think that's it.
Again, graduation was wonderful. I really appreciated, one of the student speakers mentioned that only 38% of kids have access to get to the point of graduating from high school. And to really appreciate and value the investment that the public has made in what they just received to his fellow graduates. And I thought, wow, how impactful that he realized that and was imparting that to his fellow students and sharing that with those kids. And to really think about that, that only 38% of the kids around the world have been able to get to that point of what too many of us, myself included, can take for granted sometimes. And what an opportunity our students have. He got a standing ovation from his peers at the end of this speech. And they really appreciated and valued what he had to say. And I think too often, our young people, we often hear the negatives that's happening in this generation of youngsters. And when you go to graduation and you hear what they have to say, you're blown away by the possibilities of what's to come. And I think we have tremendous opportunities out there when I see our future leaders and the possibilities of tomorrow with what they have to offer. So with that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Somewhere.
Second?
I'll second.
Jenny, please call the roll.
Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Mrs. Lovell?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?